Okay.
Lovely. And do we know if that member of the public would like to speak this evening?
I haven't been informed that they do know.
Okay, thank you. So just to remind members that this is being broadcast and will be available for repeated viewing from the recording. So apologies for absence.
Yep, both Anne and Paul Holland have family commitments, so are unable to make this evening, if you're happy to accept those apologies.
Thank you very much. And declarations of interest, Paul.
Thank you, Chair. I am on the Sports Pavilion, Sports Association Committee, so I'm going to duck out of commenting etc when we come to that item.
Thanks, Paul. David?
Item 2208, trustee of the CMSA.
Thank you. Susan?
Same for me.
Thank you. And Adrian, did you have your hand up? No. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Chair, Bill might want to...
Yeah, I'm a representative, the town council representative and the sports council.
Thanks a lot. Minutes for the 23rd of March, those draft minutes, are we all okay with those? Any adjustments?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a note for item 2182, it says the charity involved in this item is called Growing Compassion. The full name, I think, is Growing Compassionate Communities. Would we be able to change that in the minutes? Fabulous, thank you.
Paul?
Just to clarify, it's the title for it, it's the Corf Mullen Compassionate Communities.
Thank you. Have you got that, Nikki?
Yeah, we'll go back and double check just to make sure that we do get the correct one for the minutes.
Brilliant. Thank you. We then have notes that have already approved minutes, so they're to note. So first of all, the Finance and Admin Committee, Adrian?
Is that the right Finance and Admin Committee? Because we had a meeting, was it a week or so ago, Paul? I didn't know whether they'd been substituted in error or whether they were still being written up.
No, these meetings are to note, sorry, sorry. Yeah, these meetings are to note because these are approved minutes. So the meeting that was held at the beginning of April is yet to be approved by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. So Paul, you're happy with that? Yeah. Excellent. And Planning Committee, 9th of March, and then subsequently the 23rd of March. So 9th of March, you happy with those? Excellent. And the 23rd of March, same? Excellent, thank you. And then we move on to accounts for payment. So. Any comments on that, Adrian?
Just a couple. With regards to Ranger, I just wondered what residual value there was in it, because we're looking at 1700, sorry, 1600 pounds just shy of for an MOT service and repair. So that's obviously getting quite high now. I just wanted to know what the residual of that was. The other one was ICCM. I get what it sounds like. Is it like a mandatory thing we have to join, or is it something we, because we run an operator symmetry? I didn't know.
You happy for me to respond?
Yes, Nikki.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah. So the, as far as the Ranger is concerned, I have raised it and said that I don't know how long is left on it. We've just paid this. This has been the largest bill that we've had to date for that vehicle. So it would seem sensible to have had it. Now we've paid, or we're paying that to have it MOT'd and repaired. It's worth remaining for the next year. And I think a view will have to be taken should there be any further faults with it during this year. And then before it goes for its MOT, we won't automatically be putting it in next year. I think a discussion will need to be had about whether or not it's worth putting it through and having a pre-MOT check for costings before we actually commit to having anything done. The ICCM, yes, we run a symmetry. We do need to have a membership of that. So it's an annual membership that we must maintain. It's good practice.
Thank you, Nikki. Susan?
Out of curiosity, what website changes did we have to make for the Royal Family deaths? You have seen Vision ICT charged us £126.
Yeah.
Yeah, so for the Prince Philip, so it was standard. And apparently a lot of councils were ahead of the game, but we weren't. And we received an email. And for each senior member of the family, it's £35 to have the website automatically altered. We can't do it. So in preparation, because obviously we know that this is going to happen again, rather than pay a higher cost in a couple of years' time, it was prudent and sensible to have the senior Royals covered now. That will then automatically be done should this happen again. We won't have to instruct them. It will automatically be done.
Yes. Well, I meant, what changes did we have to make?
It was the ghosting page, the front page with the photograph and the narrative.
Oh, I see. I could see that.
We can't, yeah, we can't do that unfortunately.
Thank you, Nikki. Any more questions on those? No. Okay, thank you. We then have the Paper D, the Bankwide Conciliations. Any questions there? They're always quite concise. A couple of those. Thank you. And we move to Paper E, which is our Health and Safety Policy. I guess these have come up as standard reviews. Nikki?
Yeah, so basically, as part of the SILCA qualification, as I've mentioned before, I'm coming up with more and more policies that haven't been put through for approval. The Health and Safety Policy is actually drafted by Ellis Witten, our employment specialists. So it is pretty standard. The only input we've had really is as far as the name and just a general review, but it's a pretty weighty document. And as I say, it's a pretty standard document, but it does require legally for the council to approve that policy in order for us to roll it out to all staff and public and anyone who uses our facilities.
Excellent. Thank you. Adrian?
Quickie, is this stuff that they're doing for us, is this part of our subscription or whatever service we do? We're not paying them extra for this? It's just part of their yearly thing?
Yes.
Excellent. So do members have any queries with regards to that policy? Or are we happy to move to accept the policy? Paul, do you have a query?
Yeah, Chairman, it was more of a question, if I may, about, I don't have a problem with the policy at all. But I think I'm reading the right one. Is this where it's referring to making sure the ground staff are properly charging in all aspects of their work etc. I just wanted to clarify, are all the ground staff covered for all the work that we would expect the ground staff to do? Or are any of them in need of training to get up to that level? Just so that we've got value for money that we can go to any member of the ground staff for them to facilitate the necessary job, basically. That was just a query. I don't have a problem with the policy.
Thank you. Nikki?
As far as the Health and Safety Policy is concerned, this covers the council as an employer to make sure that their staff are adequately protected and are provided with all the equipment that they need, protective clothing, all of those kind of things. And likewise, the expectation of the employees, that they are also acting within that policy and protecting themselves. As far as whether or not they are trained to do the job, yes, they are trained to do the job. They're all employed to do a job. If there is a training need identified, which I think we, we're probably coming to the point where we're identifying a couple of minor things that will need training, nothing major, they will have to be done. And we would then be looking at sending them on various training or getting somebody to come in and train. But it's kind of minimal, minimal stuff. And I think there's a couple of training courses that some ground staff have raised that they would like to do, but aren't actually necessary. So it might be nice for the council as part of their career progression to offer those courses. I think it's always a positive thing for staff to have the ability to add strings to their bow if they want to. And I think it gives them a pride in the job that they're doing as well. So I think absolute valid point and something that I am aware of. Catherine also does discuss with John every day. So if there was anything that came up, we would be on it straight away. We would also be looking to work with Ellis Witten, because we obviously pay them for their support as well. So we're well covered. But if there was anything, we'd be on it straight away.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, Chair.
Absolutely. Thank you, Nikki. So can I propose that we accept this policy? Do I have a second? Yeah, everybody, that's great. And so a show of hands for in favour? Yeah, that's great. So that's adopted. Thank you. Is that an annual review on that one, Nikki? Health and Safety?
Yes. It's actually, it will be reviewed every time we have a new member of staff as a matter of course, because you need to keep on top of it. But as a standard, it would be expected to be reviewed annually as well.
That's, that's great. Thank you very much. So we move to our next, which I recognise as, again, a very standard policy, the Equality Policy. Do we have any queries on that? Yes, David?
Thank you, Chairman. It's a point of pedantry, is it such a thing?
There isn't such thing, David. There's right and wrong, and you're probably right.
Do you kind of know what I mean? I've written many of these kind of documents in my time on the planet, primarily service agreements and contracts. And if you're stating something in the first person, as in I or we, it should really be we shall, rather than we will. However, I would hate to hold this up with being approved because of that point.
I think that's good grammar, David. Nikki?
Can I just point out, I didn't, I will confess, I didn't write this document. This is actually an SLCC standard template that I've just added to Corf Mullen Town Council in, because there's no way I'm sitting and reinventing the wheel when I had such little time. I will have great delight in going back to SLCC. To be fair, I didn't pick it up, but I would have done had I read it through thoroughly. And I clearly didn't. I apologise. But I'm going to have great delight in going back and correcting them, David. So thank you.
Well, yeah, I don't think it's any hard fast rule, but if it is written in the first person, like I and we, it shall. If it's in second person, like he, she, they, or it, then it's typically will.
Yes, I do agree.
These are the times to get it right, David. Even if we're the only ones. It's fine. Jocelyn, was yours a similar point or different?
No, it was item 4.3 in the document, Chairman. The word racist is there, and it just needs the S chopping off. So, well, in terms of, was it pedantry, David said?
Yes, I see that. Have you got that then, Nikki?
Yes, I will go back to the SLCC with corrections as well.
That's right. Obviously, I would imagine David and Jocelyn, on behalf of the council, would be happy to open a consultancy contract for them for proofreading. Should they wish that for, obviously, a nominal fee, maybe for Sports Association funds or youth trust? Paul's volunteering too?
Chairman, it was just a note that I was earlier, when I was reading through, I thought, what an impressive job the clerk had done. I'm going to have to rethink that.
I think half the success is finding the document. The second half is correcting it. What a team. Excellent. So with grammatical corrections where appropriate, I move that we accept this policy. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Jocelyn. And those in favour? Thank you very much. Now, gee, now, actually, I think I can say, this is probably grammatically correct, because I think Nikki wrote it.
I do confess, it is the model, I haven't changed the original standing orders that the town council have had from when Katrina had them adopted.
Right.
They are standard model standing orders from NALC. So if there are any grammatical errors, I'll take it up with NALC. But so I'm going to assume that you've read, that you have read this. You're all aware, because you all responded to the motion, the special motion that was put in. And you did all respond to me, hence the reason why it is on the agenda, because there were the requisite number of supporters for changing the standing orders. And set out in the front page of the report explains why and what the changes are. Other than those three amendments, there are no changes to these standing orders. They remain the same. So.
Just on the addition of the Corf Mullen Town Council crest. So obviously, we've just reviewed two policies that haven't been removed since that change. So will those now automatically have the Town Council crest on them for ownership? Or?
They do.
Yeah, I saw them on there. We don't need to resolve that. It goes in. So all of these will change as and when the review goes through?
Yes. So all your policies should by standard have the Town Council ownership of crest on. Standing orders does not have to have the crest. But I feel, having, looking at it through SILCA, that it's actually an ownership of a document. This is the standing orders being adopted by the Town Council. You should take ownership of that document. And by doing that, you put the crest on the front.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, thank you. So the, so one point is to note, so we have the addition of the Town Crest is to be resolved. The addition of the local authorities and police crime. Now, obviously, this is going to come up again, isn't it, this evening with the coronavirus? So, so members, are you happy with those changes? Paul?
Thank you, Chairman. On the third one, the removal of the two-year limit, on the key points, the last paragraph, the clause remains for committees and subcommittees to ensure councillors have a fair rotation of experience and opportunity. I just needed to get some clarification. When the Subcommittee for Finance and Admin was formed previously, there was a struggle for somebody to accept the position of chairman, which is why I put myself forward. And I'm just wondering, what happens if nobody, it's not fair to force somebody if they don't want to do something? So how do we get around that should the occasion arise? That was my only concern. The rest of it, I don't have a problem with, just some clarification.
It sounds like you've been on lots of organisations when they look around and go, so, treasure them. Who'd like to do that? And everyone sits on that?
Somebody or volunteer somebody else.
Actually, I remember proposing you as chairman for Finance and Admin, which you graciously accepted.
I'm not sure what I used the word graciously.
Nikki, what happens if no one wants to do something on a committee? What happens there? Do we draw straws?
You basically, you'll sit there until you have, no, I'm joking, I'm joking. I'm joking. No, basically, I don't think it is a situation that has ever really arisen. Funnily enough, in the clerk's network, a very similar discussion was taking place, because somebody did actually have it for the full council, not for a committee. And she, basically, the clerk had to, this happened last week, they had their annual town council meeting. No one wanted to stand as the chair. So she basically had to say, well, I'm sorry, in that case, the meeting can't continue. You don't have a chair. And actually, I've got to then go back to the county and inform them that the council no longer exists in its proper form, because you don't have a chair. So we can't proceed for a sub. Yeah, so that's quite serious. But for a committee, slightly different, I suppose. I'd have to go away and double check it. But my gut instinct is that actually that committee would then have to, their business would have to then be forwarded to full council. And that committee wouldn't necessarily be running. So the full council would have to deal with the business of that committee.
I can just remove that clause?
Sorry?
We can't just remove that clause for subcommittees as well. That would be the most straightforward way. You're saying legally, we're not able to do that?
So if you're saying, if you're saying that you want the two-year rule, basically, the chairman can, as in the chair of the council, can suspend the standing order. So, yeah, so they can suspend the standing order and basically say, well, in that case, Paul, you would carry on as the chair for that committee if you were willing to do so. I thought you meant, if you were to say, I don't want to do this anymore, no one else wants to stand that situation.
It was just that was an example of that position because of the situation that we had last time round, that nobody really wanted to put themselves forward for the position. Trying to surmise if that happened in the future, whether it's that committee or whatever committee, is there a way around it? Or do we just get, scrap that particular standing order for the subcommittees as well?
No. So the chair would be able to suspend the standing order and enable the committee to continue under the current chair position. That's perfectly legal.
Or not the chairman of that.
Yeah, the chairman of full council would suspend, yes, standing order, enabling the chair of the committee to continue as the chair of committee.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Sorry, I misunderstood what you were, your first bit.
Yeah, no, it's just so that the whole council's covered in the eventuality that something like that might happen in the future. That was all. Thank you.
I mean, any such, you know, suspension of standing orders like that on behalf of the chair would, I would absolutely expect to be in consultation with the sitting chairman of that committee, rather than, you know, having to have a glass bottom tankered. Is there a shilling in there or not? Okay, so those items, recommendation is to approve. Paul?
Yeah, just going to propose. That was all.
Yeah, okay, okay. Proposal Paul, seconded by Susan. Are you happy with that?
Nikki wants to say something, Chair.
Oh, Nikki, go ahead.
Just very quickly, before you do, you do go ahead with that, just to let members know, I did send out, you'll notice, we had a bit of a technical issue with the numbering on the standing orders from the papers that were published. So just for the minute purposes, the numbering will be correct. As the copy that I did circulate this afternoon, there were no other changes in that. They are identical to the ones that were published, only numbering, just so that you're.
Yeah, that was just a legal thing. You said that you couldn't, you couldn't reissue once they'd been issued, but we could alter the minute number.
Yes. So as long as, as long as we are minoting, that those numbers are being added correctly to the standing orders that you are approving. And you're all aware that that is the case, but no other changes.
No, thanks for that, Nikki. And thanks for spotting that. So proposal from Paul, seconded by Susan. And show of hands? Yeah, lovely. And we then move to H. So this is back to our COVID resilience. Nikki, I'm guessing this is your report. Do you want to talk us through this? This must have just occupied so much of your time.
This is my nemesis. It's actually really, really, it's like wading through mud every single day. Hopefully, I've set it out as plainly and as simply and as clearly as I possibly can to explain the dilemma that we have. And it isn't as cut and dried as, we can all go back and sit in a room. There are lots of different things that impact that decision. I've tried to encompass that. So hopefully, you will have all read the report. And I've divided it into three. There is the temporary scheme of delegation. Now, the position as it stands at the moment, the court case was heard last Wednesday, and there is a reserved judgment. So that gives the judge up to a month to report back with his decision. He did, however, say that he would try to make a decision before the end of April. So I'm expecting, hopefully, a response by Friday. Hopefully, there'll be an announcement to all clerks before Friday or on Friday. We've been told not to hold our breath. So I'm kind of feeling a bit dejected about the whole situation, to be perfectly honest. The village hall can't reopen for our meetings until the 17th of May by law, because it can only be legally used for exercise for a group of six people or two households. So whatever happens, we can't meet face to face until then. And then we have the added issue in respect of not all of us are fully protected. As I've set out in the paper, you also have the issue. And I know it's highly unlikely that you would have an influx of public wanting to attend the meetings. And also, I know we live stream, but the logistics of that are very difficult, given that we would all have to be masked up and socially distanced. It does, it does cause some issues for people who are hard of hearing. It causes issues for all sorts of reasons that could potentially discriminate against individuals. So the whole situation is incredibly complex. And it's sad, because actually, for Corf Mullen, this format has worked very, very well, and has been a massive boost, because it enables the public to be so much more included and involved, which is quite sad. So the DAP, so the county organisation DAP, they have basically gone along the same lines as NALC. And they're saying, ideally, you need to look at a scheme of delegation, which is temporary, to cover you until you can safely meet face to face, which they're saying shouldn't really be until at least after the 21st of June, when the whole of society is supposed to be. And that's still not set in stone, but it's supposed to be opening up. That's not an ideal situation to be in. But they are very clear that to continue to meet virtually after the 6th of May, or one minute past midnight on the 7th of May, they're basically saying, any meetings held virtually, you can't make a decision. The decision will be held illegally, or from the auditors will hold it illegally. And they will be looking to make examples of council who flout that rule. So I will not be advising Corf Mullen to meet virtually unless the, the legislation is either changed or extended, because that puts you in a very difficult position for audit. Likewise, I can't advise you to meet face to face because of the risks to health and the duty of care that the council has to its employees, but also to each other. And as I've already said, we can't do that before the 17th of May anyway. So I have put in the temporary scheme of delegation, because for now that seems the safest and the most sensible option to go for. It's not ideal. I did say at a previous meeting that it wasn't something I would be particularly keen to go down the alleyway of, but it is what DAP are advising Dorset Town and Parish councils to do as a temporary measure. So that's why it is a temporary scheme of delegation. And it specifically ends, you know, it gives the provision that full council can agree to dissolve the scheme of delegation when it's safe to resume face to face meetings, having considered all the legal implications. So it is very painful, very stressful. And yes, it has taken up an awful lot of my time. So apologies for going on, but it's something you all need to understand how difficult it is.
Thank you, Nikki. I mean, what you've prepared is very clear, although it's obviously a very complex issue. I think it reminds me of another, another problem that sometimes we see in schools, where sometimes the technologies that are available to people at home are not equally met by the experience that they receive at school. And I think something that we, and I know lots of people across Corf Mullen and across the country, have adapted to over the last 12 months, is actually embracing technology. And I know we have seen a much greater into integration, if you like, into our processes with the people who live in Corf Mullen. They found it more accessible. It's more accessible for members to be able to attend meetings from their home whilst maybe still meeting commitments that they have at home. I also think moving forward, anybody standing for council that is maybe a carer for someone who just needs to be in the home, they're still able to join, join a meeting from home. So this is, has not just been something that we've got through. It has actually been a step forward. And I think for central government not to embrace this as an option, as something in the toolbox. And I think for central government not to embrace this as an option, as something in the toolbox of councils, is really unfortunate. But I think initially, the scheme of delegation to me is our only option that keeps us legal and compliant and functioning. So I, I noticed Jocelyn had a hand up, and then so did Adrian. So if I can come to Jocelyn first, if you still have a point, and then Adrian, please.
Thank you, Chairman. It was just to point out when Nikki was saying, in the event that we did go back to face to face meetings and we were in the, the Village Hall. Even if we did that, I don't think our live streaming microphones would stretch that far because we would all have to be socially distanced. So yet again, although, you know, in an ideal world, the desire to have face to face meetings would be seen as a positive thing. More people would then be disadvantaged because we wouldn't be able to run a proper live streaming service as we're doing at this minute. So that, that was my only point.
Thank you, Jocelyn. I totally agree. And also for members as well, you know, if anyone had hearing impairment, it would be more difficult across a room, especially an empty room, where the acoustics would be very different. So, yeah, yeah, excellent point. Adrian?
More of a thing, really, when we're looking at going back to face to face, we're talking about the 21st of June. But similarly to what we've got now, even if the regulations do relax by that point, our duty of care also exists, the staff, et cetera. And we'd have to look presumably until everybody, councillors and staff, had their second jab plus three weeks. Because that is the only way to give the best protection possible for everybody there. And then how you manage members of the public who might turn up is another matter. And I, we're into a minefield very quickly, and I, I feel very sorry for Nikki and for Catherine having to go through all this mess, because the government's not listening to sanity. And but looking at it, I think the only possibility at the moment, like you said, is to go with the delegated responsibility. I think we should propose that and, and move forward.
Thank you, Adrian. You make a good point with members of the public, with no formal Covid passport, you know, vaccine passport system in place, how do you possibly begin to establish whether it's safe for someone to come into that environment or not? You know, we haven't even considered that. And of course, a vaccine isn't a protection from contracting the virus, as I understand. It just increases your chances of surviving it, should you contract it. So, you know, a-again, good point. So is that a, a formal proposal to accept that? Does anybody else have anything they wish to say on this? So I think Tim is wanting to second.
Just second it, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. So if we move that to a vote, are you supporting it, Mike, or you have something to say?
I'd like to say something. Is my mic on? Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
This is, this is some information from the High Court claim, and this was published by the Commons Parliamentary Library. It states this. "The critical legislation is Schedule 12 of the Local Government Act 1972. This is where the saying we have to meet, not, not virtually. This contains the core legal provisions concerning local authority meetings. The Local Government Chronicle reported on 25th of March that the Court was expected to reach a decision before the 6th of May. However, there is nothing in the Schedule 12 that explicitly states that a meeting must take place in person. The regulations made under the Coronavirus Act 2020 merely state that a meeting may also be virtual." I'd just like to put that to you, that I think Robert Jenrick, do you know who Robert Jenrick is?
Yes, thank you, Nikki.
He, he, he is stating that the, the government will support the claim being brought by, I think it's, is it Hertfordshire County Council and a few other places? Lawyers in local government and the ADSO, the Association of Democratic Services Officers. So nothing's been set in stone yet, and I, I also think that the way things are going and talking to some people at Dorset Council, it could be that all this is cleared off by May the 6th. If not, I personally will not be attending any meetings until the, the virus is fully controlled.
Thank you. Nikki, I think you've got some additional information there. I can't hear you, Nikki. No.
Muted.
Guilty as charged. I did put the details about the case actually on the paper, Mike, so you can have a look at it. That's, the case is there. And yes, Robert Jenrick was supporting the case. However, we as clerks are very strongly advised by the SLCC, our governing body, that we should not be advising our councils to breach the regulations by meeting virtually after the 6th of May because of the impact that audit can have by saying that any decisions made will be unlawful because it's very clear to the SLCC and NALC that the description of place is a face to face meeting, and place at the time of the legislation did not include online meetings because obviously they didn't exist then. And that is why the government are saying we can't just change the legislation, despite actually us as clerks collectively across the country saying what they have done in Wales is that they have included in the, in, in the description of place as online. And that is all they needed to do was amend the legislation to include an online virtual meeting place, and they have not done it. And it's, it's very frustrating that it's that minor point that just needs amending. So although they're showing their support and they could do something, it's quite frustrating that they're really not. So, so yeah, it's, it's, it is difficult.
Nikki, just out of interest, the reserve judgment that's gone through, the judge that has made that reserve judgment, is that a judge from the Supreme Court? Or, you know, where, where is this at at the moment?
So it's Court, it's Court of Appeal. So they, they won the right to go to Court of Appeal. It's actually, it's the Hertfordshire County Council, and they went to, they lodged the legal challenge to the High Court. And so that's, that's where it's gone, and it has been heard. But we've just been told we have to wait for the judge to give his decision. That can take up to a month, but we are expecting it before the end of the week. And obviously, if that comes through, I will be on to you straight away to let you know what the, the result of that is. And it may mean that the scheme of delegation is removed before it even starts, I'm hoping. But as I say, we've been told, don't hold your breath, so.
Wouldn't it be wonderful if he did it by Zoom?
Would.
Excellent. So, so we have a proposal for this to go ahead with with delegated powers. And do we have a second for that? Yes, we do. Those in favour? Thank you. Okay with that, Nikki? You have that?
I am. And just to let members know, in that case, that means that meetings are suspended. So where, for example, Paul, when we were at Finance and Admin, this was the result I was talking about, is that potentially meetings may not continue as planned. I'm hopeful that the next Finance and Admin in July will still go ahead. I would really like to think that is the case, but further meetings for now are, are obviously suspended. So the annual town council meeting, we're squeezing in before the 6th of May deadline, so next Tuesday. But beyond that, it's the unknown.
Thank you. So we then move to item I, which is the robust services from the Dog Warden. Any comments on that? Adrian?
Does, does this, so reading it, it sounds like basically Dorset have finally pulled their finger around and got their own Dog Warden service. Looking at it, am I to assume then that we won't have to pay for it in the future, that we're going to get it for free? No, they're also going to put the prices up, aren't they? In, in, in that case, can, I, I know it won't get anywhere, but I, I think we need to write a strongly worded letter to Dorset saying how despondent we are with their, with their performance, because they're leaving us in limbo with no service at all.
Nikki, yeah.
Yeah, so Dorset didn't actually own the service. They contracted it to BCP. And Grant, who was absolutely fantastic, worked for BCP. And when Catherine spoke to him, he said, well, he implied it happened very suddenly. He'd had no warning. BCP hadn't had any warning. Dorset had just announced they weren't continuing with the contract. So my concern is that actually for now, because although they're saying they are going to employ, we don't have any Dog Warden cover at a time which is incredibly contentious within Corf Mullen because we have a major problem. So that's why I'm raising it with you. Although there's not really an awful lot we can do, I think you all need to be very much aware that this is not going to help the situation any.
No, thank you. Is this something our members who are county councillors could, or county councillors, dare I say that, Dorset councillors, take forward on our, our behalf? Because obviously, this is a very sensitive time as well with the sports happening at a time when they've imposed their dog control order. And now to lose the Dog Warden, which I have to say, I've never heard so mu, I think he's done an outstanding job. I've never heard so much from a Dog Warden. You know, these reports that have come back very, very helpful for knowing or getting a, helping to get a grasp of the challenges that they face, the problem that we have within that land. As you say, it's now been taken away. Would this be something Paul and Mike could put forward, please? Yes.
Certainly.
Paul?
Just wonder whether the clerk wants to liaise with other clerks with parishes and towns that are also being affected, to see whether there's an alternative source that we could employ directly.
I guess.
Collectively, to keep the cost down.
I guess what I.
There's going to be other parishes and towns in the same, same boat, isn't there?
Yeah, I guess if we were to have to source something and pay for it separately, though, is that not like double taxation? You know, if we were paying tax and getting the service previously, and now the service is taken away, and we have to raise money to pay for it otherwise.
But we're, we're paying the Dog Warden, though, aren't we?
Well, were we paying the full amount, Nikki, or we were?
Yeah, so it's not, not really a double.
So no. So what did we get from Dorset? Was the organisation or the contracting of the service, was it?
Yes, so we had a set number of hours per month of Dog Wardening in, in the parish, and that's what we were paying for. And it worked out around about five, just over £5,000 a year. So what they're saying now, Dorset Council are saying, is that they will be employing someone, but they can be called upon to do specific and targeted patrols. But my concern with that is that if there's only one person and they are, and we then call upon them, they're never going to be available. It's like the graffiti machine. It's never available.
Yeah.
So.
And, and understandably, everybody's going to want that service, aren't they?
I, I might retrain, yeah.
And, and do it privately.
If that's what one town was being charged, and you're covering numerous parishes and towns, that's a money, money winner there.
Get yourself a little electric vehicle that you could say, I'm carbon neutral, and I, and I can make your community poo neutral.
You could have a waste digester on the back, provide your gas.
Exactly. There's a whole strap line there, Adrian. Phil?
Oh dear. Yeah, of course.
Whilst I understand the desire to maybe contract our own Dog Warden, my worry would be the Dog Warden that we had was contracted by the local authority, by Dorset Council, and therefore came with powers. If you go and hire your own Dog Warden, they won't come with the same powers or the same claim that your Dog Warden that you've just lost house. So we are very much, I think, in the hands of Dorset Council, getting our act together and actually getting a Dog, a Dog Warden or a team of Dog Wardens to do what they should be doing.
Thank you.
Um, just on that note, our bylaws do allow us to fine.
Okay.
So, so potentially, we could work under our bylaws. It is a civil matter, so if anybody did refuse, then obviously cost effectiveness of carrying that through, but there is the ability to, to fine under bylaws.
Susan?
Well, this, this may sound fanciful, but I was thinking, if Dorset employ a Dog Warden who covers the East, if he's in one place, he's not anywhere else, and word is likely to get round very quickly among the dog walking fraternity, it's all right, he's in Wimbourn. Well, no, he's gone to such and such. You could say it could have happened before, but actually, it was a very good random service before, as they had several, and well, we, we always got Grant, but you never knew when he was coming.
Hmm. So.
Just, just a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Are we talking about, I, I'm a bit confused now. Are we talking about one Dog Warden? Or a team of Dog Wardens? Or several Dog Wardens in different parts of Dorset?
Yes, Nikki.
Yeah. So Dorset are saying that they will be employing one Dog Officer, a Dog, I think they're calling it a Dog Welfare Officer, I think, something along those lines, and they will be employed for East Dorset.
Wow. Paul?
Do we know how, what area the Warden that we had covered, is it a similar area? You're thinking if they're, if they're, are they replacing like the like effectively, or?
No. Grant, sorry. Grant covered an enormous area.
Exactly.
He covered Wimbourn, he covered Ferndown.
He's Dorset, basically.
Oh, virtually the whole of East Dorset.
Big merit, yeah.
And we, you know, Corf Mullen stood out. He says, it's far and away the cleanest place of all in East Dorset, and it's a pleasure to come up to Corf Mullen. So that, that's how it was. He was, he went from place to place as required.
And that's, that's what this new Warden will be doing presumably, or Dog Administrator, or whatever you want to title them.
Nikki?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that is what they would be doing, but we would have to request for them to come.
So we couldn't just buy in hours like we did before?
No.
So without buying in hours, then would there be a charge per visit then? Or how, how would that work?
So I'm assuming from, from the information that we will be invoiced. So if we, if we request them to come and do a targeted patrol, we will be invoiced for the number of hours that that patrol took place.
Gosh.
Whereas we're, whereas with Grant, we were contracted, he would provide a set number of hours patrol per month.
Okay. Well, I'm inclined to agree with Phil. We, we, we need to, we need to see what's on the table from, from Dorset before we can make an informed choice. Adrian?
While we're getting that information and waiting for that to come through, would it be possible to approach BCP to see whether we could ask for X hours as we have done now, and as, as ourselves, as a council, a single town council?
Nikki?
Yeah, so Catherine did actually, on my instruction, contact Grant direct, because I did try and preempt this whole conversation in the vain hope that I may have been able to come to you with something a little more positive, in that I may have been able to have come to you and said, Grant would actually be willing to, assuming that he had retired, was, I was thinking along those lines, that he may well have been happy to have come back as a. I was thinking along those lines, that he may well have been happy to have come back as a, as a contract for us to provide that service as he was so good. He was not really very forthcoming in speaking to Catherine. He didn't seem particularly happy to divulge any information and, and I get the, the impression that he has been told not to speak about the whole of that situation. So without putting him in a difficult, difficult position, I didn't press that any further. Whether BCP would be willing to do that, I can approach them, I'm not sure that actually they're going to be very willing, judging from the response that we had, but I can certainly try.
Hmm. So it does look like there's an opening there for you, Paul.
Oh dear.
Some nice motifs we've got as well, somebody's designed them for us.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, get that on the back of the hiages. Oh, oh dear, dear.
Boom and chew.
Adrian, you've spent too long thinking about this, haven't you? Oh dear. So I guess Nikki, you know, if we could formally make that approach to BCP, understanding the likely response. And I think, I think what Phil said is, you know, we need to. Do you know, it's almost everything you said, I was going to say we can sit on this. Until we find.
Daddy, I was amazed.
What's happening from Dorset and who this person is, I kind of get. It's frustrating because if they are talking about one person and it's the Dorset council area, that is actually quite different to what Paul was saying and Bill was intimating with what Grant did. If, if he was one of a team and he did the East Dorset area, is this now one person that's going to be even more thinly spread across the whole Dorset council area? Which like you say, Nikki, if we request, and at what point, you know, do we decide to request? When there becomes more of a problem or do we just put in a standing request, you know, once a week, once a fortnight, whatever, you know, what do you do? Because everybody's going to be wanting the same thing. Jocelyn.
Thank you, chairman, I, I just wondered whether they'd merged a couple of posts as well under this new system they're setting up, because it says the actual, Nikki's put down the actual position is called animal welfare and dog control officer. Well, that sounds like, you know, two for the price of one to me, so probably even, it sounds like two jobs have been merged. So that means that the, what we would consider the sort of dog warden part of it might be even, have even less time spent on.
Can I clarify? Can I clarify?
Yes, Phil.
If you get a dog out of control, don't phone the police. Because they don't want to know, that's the responsibility, was the responsibility of the dog warden department. So whatever they do, you know, monitoring poo, they are also more capable than, than, than the layman to control a dog that's got out of control. And you, you would be referred to the, you know, previously you were referred to the dog wardens department. And Grant was part of the dog wardens department, they weren't, he wasn't the only one on patrol.
Thank you, Bill. I, I agree with Jocelyn, certainly when you say dog welfare, then that sounds like a, a whole job, full-time job on its own. You know, dogs, you know, locked in cars and barking in gardens and all sorts of things. And I'm sure you could expand on that. So Paul, that's another aspect of the company that you're going to set up. You could then branch into dog welfare and nuisance dogs as well.
And go litter pick at the same time.
Yeah, wouldn't that, you're running with this. Susan.
I'm a little bit disturbed at the term animal welfare, does that mean he's also in charge of loose cattle? Horses, horses, loose horses? I mean, there's quite a lot of other animals that, that require this. And in fact, the dog warden, was he, he was also something to do with lost dogs, wasn't he? He used to take them to the dog pound, when we had a dog pound, I don't know if we still do. There's quite a lot of responsibilities.
Loose alpacas as well. Yes, well, they've all been shorn now, haven't they? So they're smart alpacas. So, members, how do you, how do you wish to proceed with this? Phil has suggested that we sit tight and wait and see what Dorset council comes up with, this Superman for Dorset, whether he's ours for East Dorset and how we will requisition those hours, Phil.
I'm not so sure that I want to necessarily sit tight, I do go along with the idea of Adrian's letter to Dorset council.
Yeah.
There's been a number of issues that various councillors have raised. And I think we are deserving of some sort of clarification as to what they're thinking of doing. Not least animal welfare, patrolling, how we would be billed, what invoicing structure there is. We don't know, there's nothing to say, there's nothing we can base any decision on that I can see.
No, it, it seems to be they've, they've positively decided to stop one contraction of service and they actually don't have anything at the moment to fill that gap. That's unusual. I, I think Adrian's suggestion was that we send the letter to BCP to find out if we're able, no?
The, the initial one was, I think we should send a strongly worded letter to Dorset to say that we're disappointed that they've withdrawn from that contract and therefore left us exposed to dog fouling or a lack of dog patrols because they've not got somebody in place. I think in addition to that, to try and protect ourselves going forward, it was to ask BCP as well, in the fact that, to tell them that we were disgruntled with the way in which it had been handled, which may carry some favour and make them more approachable by us. And to ask whether they would be open, should the, should they, we need to, to a fixed term contract, fixed hours contract.
Thank you, Adrian, yeah, presumably they're carrying on their dog wardening services across BCP in the way that they have today. Nikki, I, I don't imagine that that would change for them.
I don't know is the answer to that, I'm afraid, but certainly, you know, I'll do a softly, softly approach to them and, and see what they say if that's what you're, you're deciding to do.
Yes, thank you, Susan.
Just briefly, the timing to me smells very strongly of cuts, financial cuts, it's the end of the year. What can we get rid of before next year starts? We get rid of it now because it's the end of the year, contract ends. And we are wondering what we're going to do instead, we don't have a plan.
Nikki.
Can I also just throw into the mix the community governance review?
Yes.
Food for thought.
Yeah. So are we happy to go ahead with the two letters from the clerk to Dorset council to express disappointment as Adrian says and explain what that means to us and the position that's put us in? And press them further for how, how they might see things evolving. And then, as you say, the softly, softly approach to BCP to see if we are able to buy in some hours from them as effectively we have been indirectly historically. Are we happy to do that, everyone? Yeah.
Yeah, fine.
Yes, thank you. You've got that, Nikki?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, Paul.
Can I just request, Nikki, do you mind popping Mike and myself in on that correspondence to Dorset council?
Good idea.
Absolutely, in fact, I'll send, when I, when I've completed it, I'll send it to everybody for everybody to view.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. We now move to paper J, so Roy's Meadow. Hopefully we've all had time to read this report. I'm prepared by Nikki. Nikki, is there anything you wish to say to this before we discuss it?
No, I've literally put it as I've received it, I don't have the history, I'm afraid. So I'm relying on council having read the report and are able to discuss.
So everyone knows where Roy's Meadow is and I've no doubt seen the memorial stone there. And for members that were on the council at the time, I remember we had the devil's own job to actually get the wildflower seeds to, to take. Obviously you can't force things to grow and I think we reseeded on multiple occasions, but very little came through. Jocelyn.
Sorry Duncan, could you just remind, not all members know where, where it is we're talking about, Adrian doesn't know, he's waving his hand.
So Adrian, you've heard people speak about the community orchard. Yeah, and you know where those trees are, so you go off the back of the cricket, yeah, and there's on the corner there, as you might come up to the back of the cricket pitches, there's a stone, a piece of granite stone. That's the memorial that's mentioned in the correspondence and that's Roy's Meadow.
Right.
We, we spoke about it, I think, maybe a few months ago and we were talking about the grass cutting and how some was left long and some was cut short. And the idea was that the longer grass would have all these wildflowers growing in them. And it was quite a complex seed mix that was bought in and professionally sourced. But it was really difficult to get it to take. Adrian.
Susan has a hand up before me, I think.
Susan.
Yes, I just briefly wanted to say, as Nikki says, she doesn't know any of the history. One of the important things was that it's only, it's a certain sort of wildflower mix. It's not, you know, the ones by the side of the road are beautifully colourful because they sow them every year. Roy had apparently declared he particularly wanted this perennial mix, which is less colourful. Now, Dave, can you remember, you probably know technically more than I do. It's, but it's, it's different, it was very difficult to establish partly because our ground wasn't poor enough. It's something which, which needs very poor ground and we were trying to denude the ground of, of nutrients. Can you, can you tell us what it was, what, what specification was, Dave?
Not really now, I've, I forgot what it was, but I know it was very poor ground and they wanted this wildflowers as we specified before he passed away and they didn't really take at all, they redid it several times. And I presume personally myself that the ground was too poor for it to mature and take on.
That was too rich, too rich.
Too rich, yeah. That's all I can remember to be honest now, it's so many.
But it was this perennial ones, but people used to say they were lovely and colourful, you know, by the side of the roads, the ones by Wing Green. This wasn't, Tim, do you know something about it?
Well, I, I've tried to start a, plant a wildflower meadow myself and failed abjectly, even though the ground we used was extremely poor. And I think we've got to be aware that it is a technically very difficult thing to do and it needs very specific ongoing management. You've only got to look at the way the poppies grow randomly, they need very specific sets of circumstances. That's why they grew in 1918, 19 in France, because they, the soil had been turned over in a particular way that allowed them to germinate. And we could spend very large sums of money trying to perpetuate what Roy wanted. I remember him well and knew him well and, and I, I do think we've got to be a little bit careful about trying to fulfil a wish that may not be achievable.
Thank you, Adrian.
Similar things really, I'm assuming when it failed, we might have actually tried to test the ground to work out what we were doing wrong. Surely if it won't work this way, then the, the mix that we use, the wildflower mix that is used on the side of the roads, could, could we not try that as a, as an option?
It's not as easy as that unfortunately, it is a complex business, if you look at the mix on the, the side of the roads of course, isn't used at all, and it's not just the ground, it is the way it is raised or cut, especially in the autumn, at the end of the flowering season. And the way that that in turn is then left so that the germination can take place in the late autumn. It's a very, very complicated business and, and for instance, mob grazing is one of the ways you can perpetuate it, getting animals onto an area to graze it in a particular way.
At a particular time.
Yeah, at a particular time. And so I, I hate to say it, I think we'd be embarking on a, on a, on an adventure here if we tried to recreate something that is simply beyond our skills and means, unless we spend a very great deal of money on it.
We, we did bring some professor, some expert in a couple of times to advise us. And we scraped all the stuff off and did it again, didn't we? And in fact, his daughter has expressed these sort of emotions before. She particularly got very upset by it, I think his son is a little more understanding that we've really tried.
Yes, you're right, Susan, my recollection is after the, and of course this all gets dragged on because you go and then you have to wait and and the second time that we reseeded, we, we did have somebody, I have a soil specialist and a botanist out to check. And actually the seed people that we had purchased the mix from actually gave us a discount the second time, which they didn't need to because there was nothing wrong with the seed mix. It's just as Tim says, the challenges of doing that type of thing. And actually, if you watch any of the gardening programmes like Heathland Meadow and Wildflower Meadow is a very highly managed environment, it doesn't just happen. I think people's expectations get risen, or at least their, their view of what a wildflower meadow might look like is informed by these very vibrant colourful patches that they see on the side of the road. And they think that that is what will come from this area. But we were told very clearly, weren't we, Susan, that at the second seeding, that if we had five different species of plant, we'd be fortunate. And it would not be some Monet-esque pattern that we would see in the field. Jocelyn.
Thank you, chairman, with respect to the family, because I've, obviously, you know, I've read the report and understand the issues involved. But obviously not being around at the time, I, I don't understand the history. For me, as someone who goes up to that particular field and does dog walking and, you know, when the, you've got the sort of the diagonals made through, you get the long grasses in the middle. I regard that as a meadow, I, I wouldn't, on one hand, being, you know, it's of incomplete ignorance of this issue. I'm sort of quite surprised by this because I, I would see, you know, the fully grown grasses in that field and I would regard that as a meadow. So it, to me, it, it's just, I, I would say, well, it's lovely as it is, I, I love walking in that field when you've got the, you know, the grass is all grown. So to, to those of us who don't know the history or the, you know, the original intention to honour Roy all that time ago, maybe, maybe many people won't actually see it as some kind of effort that's been attempted and failed. Maybe they'll just think it's a lovely place to walk in, I don't, that's just, just my own sort of point of view.
Thank you, Jocelyn, Adrian and then Bill, please.
I, I think reading, reading the stuff that was sent with it, I think there's, the, the thing that came across was the disappointment that I think that his daughter felt she'd been lied to. And that it was all sorted and everything was okay. I think what we need to go back, the only way to resolve this is to go back and say that we've tried numerous times, we've had professional expertise in this, it is impossible to get this started. And what we, what we plan to do is to, as we do now, which is, as Jocelyn had said, manage it in terms of long grasses to encourage wildlife, but to be able to set up a wildflower meadow isn't going to happen. Because the, the land is not suited to that seeding. And I think if we went back that way, it would seem that we're being contrite and being honest with her and telling her what's been done.
It is possible the family are not aware of how many attempts and the expense that has gone to. I'm not sure, Susan.
No, yeah, I think they are well aware, we've had this conversation with his daughter before. I did, I must say, I didn't look at the right time of year last year because it was, I know one of the predominant perennial flowers that Roy wanted. I know one of the predominant perennial flowers that Roy wanted was the oxide daisy. And I think there's one, two others which are yellow. There's not any red poppies or anything like that. And at the right time, that we now do have quite a lot of oxide daisies and quite a lot of the right sort of thing. But it is not the wildflower meadow that you see by the sides of the roads, which is a different, a different mix altogether. Which is not what Roy wanted. He felt those were a bit vulgar.
I think we've got to be practical, Chairman, and I think we could talk around this forever. But I think it may suggest that we will propose, formally propose, that we accept that we're not going to be able to achieve exactly what he wants, but that, and we clarified that with his family. And 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 take it from there, see what they would like us to do as an alternative, or whether we just leave things as they are. Thank you, Tim. Paul.
Can I just mention that, you know, calling it Roy's meadow now, even the stone doesn't say it's Roy's meadow. It mentions what Roy did. You know, and it was his ambition to have this meadow, but it was never Roy's meadow. I've been here for a number of years and that, when we had that change, we ended up with the dog walking field, which is the one that you're calling Roy's meadow. We had the picnic field, which is the one with a big tree in the middle of it. And we had the normal recreation ground. Now, everybody knows it as the recreation ground, the dog walking field and the picnic field. So, you know, we were on a hiding to nothing to try and you know, go back seventeen years.
Yeah.
And call it something else.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry, Paul, just to interrupt you. Can I remind members just to make sure that you're on mute? Because Paul's talking and there's quite a bit of feedback coming back and it could be if some of us aren't muted. Thanks. Paul, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was just going to sort of say along the lines of what Adrian said about. And I know Susan said about, we've had a conversation. I think if we've actually got a documented timeline, this is what the parish council at the time has done. Clear and precise to go back and say, look, we've tried as much as we can, but there comes a point where it's throwing good money after bad. And we've got a responsibility to the full parish. Maybe we suggest if she is dissatisfied, does she want to make a contribution to try again? You know, we've tried twice, I think, from what I've overheard. If she's that upset about it, would she like to make some form of contribution to try herself?
I think you're right, Paul, and I think we've actually formally reseeded three times. And this was hundreds of pounds, as I remember in those days, for the volume of seeds that we were needing to buy in. It's not cheap, you know. This is where this kind of wildflower meadow, which seemingly looks very natural, is actually very complex to recreate.
I think also, Chair, if within that correspondence with the daughter, that we actually register that we are sorry that she feels this way and we, you know, she's obviously got Roy obviously died quite a number of years now ago and she's obviously had the grieving process, but there's still that emotion to her late father. Which I think we need to acknowledge, but explain that, you know, this is process that we've gone through. So I thought it was twice, but it was three times that it's been done up there. You know, what more can we as a council be expected to do above and beyond? Where we've got to. I mean, I really do feel for her. She's obviously got this emotional attachment quite understandably, which I think we need to acknowledge as well. But just to go through and actually.
Her letter seems to
A lot of emotion in there.
Absolutely. And regrets any abandonment or neglect. And I think the type of letter that you're suggesting would be able to explain in a sympathetic way that those flowers that she might expect or hope to be there are not absent through neglect or abandonment. It's simply not been possible, as Tim said. So how do we feel about responding to the family sympathetically, outlining what we have done? And that it's not through neglect or abandonment, that it doesn't appear to be, you know, the Argentinian plains or what they might have hoped for. And I think, you know, if we were able to have something there more floriferous, then we would all love that. You know, it's not that we don't want it. Can we suggest that we ask them what they would like us to do instead? Put the ball back in that court. Absolutely. That could be part of the same letter. Are we happy to draft something along those lines?
We're going to ask if they're going to make some form of contribution if they feel hard done by is the wrong term, but you know what I'm trying to say.
If we haven't
We haven't done sufficient.
Haven't been able to achieve what they wanted.
Would they like to make some sort of contribution towards it?
Yeah.
Try again.
Adrian.
I think we should just go for sympathetic letter at this moment in time. I think if we start saying money, they're going to say, ah, yeah, but you could spend money and you'd do it. I think it makes it, I think it changes the tone of our approach if we start talking about money. I think we say, we tell them what we've done. We tell them that it's unviable to set that, in our view, to be able to get that, what his wishes were. We could ask him what they want us to do instead, but I wouldn't mention money just yet.
No. I agree. It makes it sound as though money would make it right. And these seeds didn't not grow because of a lack of funding. I do remember the bills for the seeds at the time and it was many, many hundreds of pounds. Paul.
Just a word of caution on that, about going to them saying, what would you like? They could come back with anything. Then you might be opening a whole can there. Just a word of caution.
Yeah. Clark, do you feel you've got enough to, you're a very empathetic person. Do you feel that you're able to put something together that straddles the views of members?
I will endeavour to draft a letter and I will send it out for you to decide whether or not it's appropriate to send.
Very eminently diplomatic. It may be, Clark, I'm not sure how far back our records go. But I would have thought the name of the seed company would be quite distinctive and we would we would be able to evidence how much we have spent as a council on seed. Or would that be a little bit far back to get that?
It would certainly mean rooting around in the loft of the
Yeah, no, don't do that. Not now, we've just done the health and safety policy. Don't want to lose you in the attic. Flowers in the attic. Virginia Andrews, wasn't it? Susan.
I think Adrian's absolutely right. We don't want to introduce money at all. And it's not, it's not actually money she's concerned about. She thinks we've forgotten about it. And we haven't, none of us have. And we need to tell her that we check it every year and that the ground staff do look after it. And we're all trying and it's not for want of trying or want of love. It's nature. This is what happens.
Nikki.
Could I just ask a massive favour? Susan, you've obviously got quite a bit of background knowledge, as does Tim and I think Bill. Would you be able to, and also Dave, I think as well, would you be able to possibly ping me an email with some details as to how often it was done, just so that I can have an idea and I can incorporate some of that into the letter to her to prove that actually we have done as much as we can possibly do. It would be really helpful if you could.
I think the Holland's too will have a lot of knowledge of this. They knew Roy well, so we'll include them.
Lovely, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everyone. We now are, okay, yes, the parish footpath survey. Is this Nikki? Catherine.
Happy to take this one. I mean, the report pretty much says it all, but as at the community services meeting, we talked about the footpath surveys, which haven't been done for some time as a result of the Covid pandemic. We contacted Dorset Council for an up-to-date list of the footpaths for Call from Mullins. There are forty-one paths and bridleways across the parish. The list of all the paths are there in appendix one. What has been done is Claire has collated the maps for each footpath, which are all numbered in line with the listing received from Dorset Council. And they're in the office, should any of you decide that you wish to actually take up doing footpath surveys, whether it be near to where you live or anywhere across the parish. It's down to members to decide what actually, or what they want to do and how they want to do it. So over to you.
Thank you, Catherine. Adrian.
Having no history of this, so apologies. So this is us looking at Dorset's path. Is there a formal way in which people can complain to Dorset about the paths and get them sorted? Is it something that, I mean, I'm quite happy, we've been walking quite a lot since the first lockdown, so I'm quite happy to go in. And sorry, Nikki, I forgot to go in today because I was going to go in. I had too many meetings on all of a sudden. I'm quite happy to go in because we've been doing lots of walking around the village since, surprisingly, a year last March. So I've been on quite a lot of footpaths down the village. It might be, if I go around, I might be able to write some stuff down and take quite a few of them off the list. But at the end of the day, this is Dorset paths. Surely, if not, can we not just publicise it on our Facebook page saying if you've got any complaints about the paths? This is the people you need to talk to.
Nikki.
So yes, these are Dorset paths. I understand, obviously, at Community Services, it is something, I think Susan's quite passionate about the footpaths, obviously. And I think we can't force you to do this. This is not a town council responsibility or duty. But the paths are there, the maps have been drafted. For those of you who are avid walkers and are willing to do a footpath survey, then obviously, please come in and collect and have a go. You can report directly and I have on the front of the cover sheet included the link that you can go direct to Dorset Council because that is ultimately all we will do in the office. So what it does is it creates work for us in the office to just simply forward on what you're already telling us. So if you are able to do that direct, it's really helpful. Obviously, if you want to just give it to us in the office, that is absolutely fine. And we can then keep a record of anything that has cropped up and provide that as feedback for community services. But I understand this hasn't been done for several years. We certainly haven't had any reports into the office as far as the footpaths are concerned. People do tend to go direct to Dorset Council because I think that's what they assume or they assume that that is who maintains those, which is quite correct. So we haven't had any complaints.
Thank you. Susan.
Can I briefly tell you how we used to do it in the past? That all, and you tell me if Covid regulations are going to make this a little bit tricky. You have them all in the office and each of us who were willing to go in would go in and collect three or four because a lot of them are adjacent to each other and very close. Some of them, as you can see, are very short and some are longer. So we'd go and collect three or four of either where we lived or wherever. When they were completed, you'd put notes as if there were broken stiles, if they needed clearing, you know, any problems that you noticed, whether they were wide enough. Because there is a statutory wood, certainly the bridleway should be, and I think a footpath. And then when you'd done one or them, you'd hand in either a sheet or hand the maps back so that we knew those ones had been done and collect some more if you wanted to. And we generally used to get through almost all of them. I think each year we'd get to the autumn and the weather would go bad and there'd be one or two outstanding. And I know I feel guilty that there's one that I had outstanding. But we get most of them done. And it's a very useful exercise. And it also helps the councillors to understand yet another resource that we have. Does that help?
Thank you, yes. Bill.
You're muted, Bill.
You're muted, Bill.
That better?
Yes, much.
Good. I, in the year two thousand, or two years ago, I was involved in a similar thing to Susan. We picked up certain footpaths and effectively did an audit on their condition. And I remember one particular one went across Upton Heath. And every time I tried to do it, my Wellingtons were up to the knees and I kept falling over. So I abandoned it and eventually did it. But it's, you know, I thought this was something that was done every year. You know, effectively an audit of the footpaths in the parish.
Thank you. So Nikki, this may be something that members wish to do or not. The resources, as you said, are in the office. So can I suggest that if it's possible, if we are able to do it easily, that we can publicise on our website what the footpaths are? I mean, I think it's just a point of interest for anyone coming to our website to understand this aspect of our community. That could be done in conjunction with the mapping link that you've put on the cover page so that everybody has the opportunity to be eyes nears. And should any councillors wish to come in and specifically look at any or all of any of these footpaths and walk them and feed back a report either directly via the link or via the office, that that's a way forward for this. Does that fit well with you, Nikki?
Yep, that's absolutely fine. I mean, the work has been done. The maps have been produced. The information is there. They all have a cover sheet with, that enables you to write down any issues that you come across if you're walking. So they're all there and ready to go. I was just trying to direct councillors to report direct if you can to avoid overloading us in the office, really. That was my, selfishly, that was my concern.
I think if we are able to publish it on our website, then that actually gives us another port for any member of the community coming forward and having an issue with a footpath. We can direct them to that, say, is it on here? And if there is an issue with it, you may report it directly. So it's, and they may live close to the path and not be sure as to who is responsible for it. As you say, these are Dorset footpaths and so it makes that clear to them who is responsible for it. But I understand we could be their first port of call, making that inquiry. Susan.
And I don't think actually this has to be uniquely a councillor job. If there are any members of the public who are happy to take a couple of maps and try, it's actually quite a useful exercise to explore somewhere with a map. And I can think of one or two residents who might be very happy to do three or four paths.
Excellent. So are we happy that that's a way forward for that one to publicise the paths? If any members wish to go into the office, they can obtain a map. I guess this could be something that would be emailed to them, Nikki, but this is already printed off. You have the maps printed off.
Yeah, the maps are already printed off and ready to collect.
Yeah, and that may be difficult for members to do themselves. Yeah, and that may be difficult for members to do themselves. So it's very, you know, helpful to be able to go to the office to get that. Are we all happy with that? Yep. Excellent. Great. So we now have, oh yes, the recreation ground toilets, so the update, Nikki.
Yeah, before I hand over to Catherine, can I just point out, we very sadly had a contractor submit his quote, which covered everything that we were looking for for less than the £500 limit that you and I could have actually gone ahead and signed off. But unfortunately, it came in after papers were published. So we have had to go ahead with this, with this paper. So just to let members know that had we had that quote before, I would not have been bringing this to you, I would have just been going ahead and getting those toilets sorted. So unfortunate on timing. So I'll hand over to Catherine to explain the rest.
Thank you, Catherine.
Okay, I think my paper is self-explanatory, but this, this has been a challenging task to get contractors to actually come out to give a quote, even when they've been out to actually get a quote from them a lot, or either very busy and unable to carry out the work in the foreseeable future or don't want the work. The report shows the scope and we've gone for the minimal approach to get the toilets open and up and running. I don't know whether members are aware, we haven't done a lot of work on those toilets for some time, so they are a little tired and in need of redecoration. So part of the scope was to do painting of the walls, the ceiling and the floor, as well as replacing all the pipework to the sink and all the toilet roll holders, the sanitiser and soap dispensers. And basically just to give them a lick of paint to make them look a bit better, but at minimal cost. One of the stumbling blocks has been the doors. The doors are wooden doors with a metal plate facing on either side. The metal plating doesn't quite go over the whole of the door and the three locks that are on the doors are actually exposed. And how the people got in, the vandals to vandalise the toilets, was to chisel out the locks in the wood around the locks where the metal plate doesn't actually go right up to the locks. So the doors have been more challenging because a lot of contractors that I contacted don't want to get involved in wooden doors, don't replace wooden doors and want to replace with PVC, which obviously then has an additional cost. Under the new matrix of how we're going to be doing tenders for work, you can see that we've now, rather than naming and the contractors and actually providing a copy of their quote, they're all listed as contractor and then one, two, three, et cetera. On the report, we've got contractors just to do, repair the plumbing and get the toilets up and running. We've got one contractor who just will sort the door out. And then the final contractor, number five, which is the one that the clerk was mentioning at the start of this agenda item, is actually able to carry out all of the work. So he has actually indicated that he can carry out the work as soon as possible if given the go-ahead to do the work. But it is noted that all of the contractors are busy. So even if we agree tonight which one we're going to go with, I don't know when it's going to be done, but they all know we want them done as soon as possible. I don't think there's anything further to say apart from, obviously, some of the contractors didn't want to quote for all of the work, so there are some additional costs in there. And also, the electrician will need to come back and redo the locks and the timing on the doors, so that will be an additional cost. And then just to note, the money that we've spent to date is £211. So it's for members to consider the quotes and agree, if any of them, to proceed with to carry out the repairs. I think that's everything. So over to members if they want to ask any questions.
Thanks, Catherine. Contractor five.
Yeah.
That's a marked difference in costings from some of the other quotes. Has contractor five done any work for us as a council previously?
Do you want me, can I answer or does Nicola want to answer?
Nikki?
I was just gonna say, he has provided quotes before.
Okay. Thank you. Adrian.
Two things really. The worry of a U-PVC door is that, to be quite honest, it's most likely less secure than a wooden one because they tend to have panels that you can just kick straight through. They're not exactly secure. Not only that, but they set a light really well if people put a lighter to it. So given that and the fact that we've got one person who's proposed doing it for cheap, he might not have done a job for us in the past, but the difference is massive. And I think we should just say, look, it's easier in terms of burden on the staff to get one person to come and do it all. Let's just, I propose we go for number five.
Thank you, Nikki.
I just wanted to let members know what's quite interesting because coming up later on the agenda is obviously the resolution to sign the document, lease documents. What was drawn to my attention going through the lease documents is actually those public toilets are within the boundary line for the sports association lease. So all this time, actually, the sports association are responsible for those toilets. They are outlined, they are part of the red line on that lease drawing. It is only the external that isn't. So the wall, as you drive in, the wall and up to the doors, but the actual, the building is outlined in red, it includes the toilets. So actually, we're doing them a favour because we are maintaining them for them.
But they don't use these toilets.
Sorry, Bill, just a moment, Susan's here.
Yes, I'm not gonna, I'll talk about that in a minute. Now, to contractor five, as Adrian says, I find certainly seems very appealing. Well, he won't be able to do the lock on the doors, from what I understand. Is there anything to stop us while we're sorting that out, opening up the toilets and getting K9 to lock them and unlock them when they come in to lock the, lock up the rec? They open up the rec first thing in the morning and lock it at nightfall, don't they?
Thank you, Nikki.
Not at a vast cost, no.
It would be a vast cost, would it?
Yes.
Oh, right, okay. And the other thing I was saying about the involvement of the sports association, it has always been considered that these are the town council's toilets and they're not the responsibility of the sports association. We can, we can talk about that at another time. The water supply comes from the building, but we've never had, we've never been expected to do anything to them.
Nikki.
Yeah, although the sports association haven't been expected to and nor would I expect them to now, I'm just drawing to your attention that they are included within the lease on the plan. So they are technically part of that lease, but the expectation is the town council keep, upkeep them because obviously that's what's happened over the years. But technically, from the start, they should have been part of the sports association responsibility within that lease.
That's, that's interesting because technically then, if I follow what you say correctly, then the sports association, if they were technically responsible for that, should have notified their insurers that this damage has happened, albeit they are not making a claim because we are footing the bill for it. Because presumably that would go towards the risk assessment for them.
I think because it has for the last thirty years been the town council who have taken responsibility, that is implied responsibility. So although they are included within that lease, I'm just providing that to you for information, there is no expectation because it has been implied for that thirty years that the town council will maintain and upkeep them at their expense. But from the start, it should have been because it was included in the plan, they should have been handed over with that lease.
So moving forward with the extension of the lease that we're to sign, then that really ought to be an implied or written agreement with the council? Or are you saying that that would, from that point, would have to be different?
It would, the lease will continue as it has for the, as it has done for the past thirty odd years. So there will be no change. I'm giving it to you for information.
Yeah. So when you say there's no change, then the town council would maintain its unofficial agreement to maintain those toilets?
Yes.
So contractors, Adrian's has a proposal, Phil's got his hand up, Phil.
Just a quick question, Chairman, for Nikki. Do we know if the individuals stroke individuals that did the damage have been dealt with? And if they have been dealt with, is there any compensation coming back? Or have we got any means of clawing back at least some of our costs from the individuals that did the damage?
So I'm gonna provide you with an update as part of my clerk's update rather than as part of this, if that's okay.
Thank you, Nikki. So we have a proposal, which is to go with contractor five from Adrian. Do we have anybody that wishes to second that? Tim does. And those in favour? You've got that, Nikki? That's lovely, thank you very much. I pressed the wrong button. And.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Nikki.
Can I just, for the purposes of the minutes, Catherine, could you divulge who that contractor is and it will be included in the minutes, please?
Thank you.
It's service, service first, I think, sorry. Yes, it's service first. Apologies.
Excellent. Thank you. Nikki, do you have a winner? Winners of the dog competition? You have enough information now from members that have submitted responses to have a decision?
You've skipped a couple of agenda items.
Have I? Oh yes, so I have. Sorry, let me scroll back up. I was gonna say, and time and date?
Sorry.
Excellent. Okay, well, let's go back to Anne. So to note the update on the flooding issues surrounding the allotment. Now, Susan.
Can I ask a question at this point, which is not, well, it's about the allotments. I met Wayne Beck this afternoon, who is the man who owns the field just above the allotments. And he asked me if I could find out. He says originally, he thought we had a plan to put a hedge all the way round, all three sides of the allotment site. So far, we've gone up one side. Have we any intention to put one across the top? Because he had an intention to put one himself across the top and he wants to know what we're doing because he doesn't want two hedges competing with each other. Are we planning to put a hedge across the top?
From the, well, from the, sorry to interrupt, from the information that I've got, there's no plans to amend the boundaries that are currently there. They, as you say, Susan, they were growing up the one side, which the grounds team have been maintaining currently. So my suggestion to you all would be that if the landowner at the top is willing to put a hedge up, then let him go. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you. So any, any comments on the update that we have from Catherine? I think Adrian.
Just a quickie, really, they, we're on about selecting suitable replacement or pot oil filling. Surely it's just crush and run with a whacker blade for the bottom top, for the bottom car park?
That is ongoing. I've just, we've just left it as ongoing because we are working on it. It's a little more complicated and time-consuming than what we thought, but we're working on it. Adrian is the answer. Hopefully, we'll be able to come to Community Services with a lot more information, but at the moment, we're still dealing.
Thank you. Any other comments on that or noted? Noted, thank you. And now we have to resolve and sign the lease documents for the lease extension of the sports.
Chairman, I'm removing myself from this part of the meeting.
Okay, Paul, no problem, I understand. Nikki.
Just, this is really, really straightforward. So all I need is a resolution from council to agree to sign the documents. The leases are purely extending the original lease. There is no, there's no dramatic changes to those leases. I have them in the office, so I need a resolution that you all agree for them to be signed. And then I need two councillors to volunteer to come in and sign them in front of my witnessing. And that's all I need from you.
Yeah. I'm happy to do that, Nikki. I don't know if anybody else, Phil and Adrian have got their hands up. Adrian?
To make it easier, I propose we sign a lease.
Lovely, thank you.
I intend going into the office to get some maps tomorrow, so I'm quite happy to sign it.
There you go. Are you okay if Phil and I sign those for you, Nikki? Would that tick the box?
Absolutely would. Could I ask a favour of not to come in tomorrow, though? We've got the internal auditor all day.
Oh, lucky you.
Yes, so if possible, I'd be really grateful if you didn't come in tomorrow.
Just give me a shout, Nikki, when it's convenient and I'll pop up.
I'll come up Thursday morning if that's okay.
Perfect, Phil, thank you.
Perfect, lovely. Thank you very much. We, I couldn't wait to get to this. This is competition, it always grabs you. So Nikki, are you able to deduce now from members' responses?
I feel I'm a bit like at the Oscars now because this.
Yeah, exactly.
So, so basically, for your information, so what we did was, we received, I actually received over twenty entries.
Wow.
I think it was twenty-eight or twenty-nine entries in the end. And I asked every single member of staff to pick their one favourite, which they all did, which reduced it down to nine finalists to make it easier for yourselves. And it also included the staff then in part of this competition. So it made it a whole council input, which I think is quite important for something like this, to demonstrate that actually the whole council are involved, including staff. And from those nine, I obviously emailed them out to you and you all very kindly have given me your submissions. And I can tell you that the winner of the five to six age group was poster two, which was Lydia Watkins. Whose poster is this one?
Excellent.
So that's the winner of the age five to six. The winner of the seven to eight was a young lady called Madison Wright and she was poster three.
Very good.
And we did only have one finalist for the nine, ten and eleven, and that was Arthur Cornwell. And that was his drawing. So they are the three winners, which I will be contacting tomorrow. We will do a formal announcement on our website and social media on Friday, but we will let them know and find out what they would like for vouchers from the chairman's allowance. So thank you very much for helping us get to the bottom of all of that, quite literally.
Excellent. And that was a very, that was a very good response numbers-wise. And we know that conversation has happened in all of those families and I'm sure those children will be great ambassadors now to go out and talk about it. Neither entry has been successful. So congratulations to everyone who took part in that and especially our winners. Thank you very much. Clark, you're up. Clark, your updates?
So I've only got the one item, which is the the matter of the vandalism that took place at the toilets. I have had two conversations with the police. And the first conversation took place where they were evidence gathering. And they would be pursuing, there was apparently a video of of these individuals confessing. The police were basically cautious because they said that couldn't be admissible evidence. They needed them to actually confess in interview. So they were pursuing that. I think it has, it's been quite slow and quite painful from my perspective. But they are dealing with it. I then had a call from the investigating officer, not last week, the week before end of that week, to basically say that they're still dealing with it. She was going to collect the video evidence that had been given and she would then be coming back to me to let me know. I did tell her that the council did want to proceed with some kind of justice and that they were not prepared to just allow this to to go away. That actually, the costs involved to the council are quite a lot when you consider how much we're having to pay to get the vandalism put right, but also staff time in dealing with all of this. You know, it it all mounts up. So the the police are very aware and they are taking it seriously and they are dealing with it. I just feel it's a little slow, which obviously can't be helped. She's dealing with several cases all at once, I think. It's it's a manpower and resources issue. So until they come back to me and let me know the outcome of their interviews, I suppose, for a better word, then I'm not gonna know anything further. But it is, it is progressing and they do know that we want to to pursue some kind of justice. What that will be will be dependent on how much evidence there is and whether or not there are charges that can be made. So that's the position. And that's really all I've got to update you with because everything else has pretty much been on the agenda. So. And oh, one other thing, though, we are back in the office, the office is open, normal opening hours. We're working in teams of two. And as I say, tomorrow, we have the internal auditor all day. So, yeah.
Thank you. Well, line of duty, I've managed to spin the same story for nine years. So hopefully, this investigation into our lose will be somewhat wrapped up sooner than that. But there we go. So my report, I have nothing to report except a personal issue, which I'm really pleased to buy, which is today I received my second Covid jab. I think all of us as individuals are very on board with the outstanding vaccination programme that our health services put up in this country. And again, as many of you who've already had your second jab will know, it's an excellent service and very, very well organised. So I do hope that those people that haven't received that yet will be able to soon and stay well. Apart from that, I've been at home going nowhere, trying to stay safe. Dorset councillors, Mike, I can't see Paul at the moment, but I'm sure he's there. Mike, do you have anything you wish to report?
Yes, I'm resigning from the planning committee on the town council. Because I, it looks as though I'm gonna join the eastern area planning committee on Dorset council. And I've been told that there could be conflict of interest there. So I've enjoyed going on the planning committee here, but it's the last one. Don't smile.
No, no, I'm I'm sure you'll be as effective on the East Dorset area Dorset council planning committee and representing the interests of Quaith Mullen.
Oh, absolutely.
As you have been in our own planning committee. So thank you, Mike, for all the time you've given to attending those meetings and those contributions.
Can I just say, Chairman, that it will be a great relief to have a voice of sanity on the eastern area planning committee?
Yeah.
Would that be?
You can work.
Before me. Thanks.
Paul, do you have?
Nothing specifically to report, but a query, though. The defibrillator machine on the outside of the co-op. One of our community first responders has been in contact with me. Well, I went up and checked the pads and it's out of date. So it's actually currently not on the system. But he tells me that it now comes under the jurisdiction of the town council. And I couldn't recall whether it did or it didn't. And he was gonna check with Kate Fisher from South West Ambulance Services Trust. I did query it and he seems to be quite of the opinion that it's town council.
I'm not sure on that one. I don't think so. Nikki shaking her head, Nikki?
No, definitely not. That is the only defibrillator that the town council have is the one at the rec.
Yeah, that's what I said to him.
We are not responsible for the one of the co-op.
It was the co-op, the one on the outside of the co-op.
Yep, no, that's not ours, definitely not.
That's, that's just a misunderstanding, I think, Paul.
Yeah, well, I'll go back and buy cake because at the moment that one can't be used. But obviously, inside the co-op, they've got one. But that's only handy if the co-op's open, obviously, so.
I mean, whoever is responsible for that, it would be really good if it could be put back into service because.
Oh, yeah, it's just a case of getting replacement pads. Soon as they're in, it will be back up and running.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
But I'll, yeah, leave that with me. I'll go back to him. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Paul. So matters for forthcoming agendas, anybody have anything? No? Well, agree the date and time of next meeting, that's not something we're able to do at this time. So it's watch this space. Although it may not be watch this space, it may be pick up your email space. Nikki's nodding, so that's quite likely. Okay, well, look, thank you very much, everyone, for this evening. And, you know, keep safe, those that are yet to receive vaccinations, good luck with that. And I hope that comes along for you as soon as possible. Remember, still stay, stay well and stick with the government guidance.